All right, time's a wasting. I'll call the regular meeting of Handwell Council, January the seventeenth, twenty twenty-three to order, please.
Can I move to approve the agenda with the following additions? Seventeen C, we have first reading of bylaw. Oh, what number is that?
It's twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three. Bylaw respecting the duties and powers of the CAO, Chief Administration Officer. And seventeen D, the second reading amendment by law. Zero one, twenty-fourteen, bylaw respecting the proceedings of council administration. And a nineteen B, matter pursuant to section sixty-eight, one F of the Local Governance Act. Information concerning legal opinions or advice provided to local government by solicitor and client in a matter of local government business.
Seconders?
I'll second.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. We welcome everybody for having a number of guests with us this evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting. And we also have two new counselors, new additions for January from the former LSD of Kingsclere. We have Debbie Packer for Ward Five and Lee Kreis for Ward Six. So we'll go to moving on. We have a motion to adopt the minutes from our regular meeting of council, December twenty-first.
I move the adoption of minutes of the December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of council.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Any question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you.
You've got to kind of slow down because you've got to wait for Councilor Highsleth.
Right.
There's like a three-second delay right there.
Could be a lag. Yes, Councilor Highsleth is not, she's ill this evening, so she's calling in by phone. So that's why she's not here, but we'll just kind of slow things down so I can hear her response.
I said aye.
Okay, thanks, Holly. Any public input tonight? Anybody wish to speak?
Hi, Angela Reeger, and I'm a resident of Handwell. I just had a question for you. I had requested the schedule for admin meetings, and I know that they're no longer going to be held. So I'm just wondering, is there going to be a new structure? Is that going to be discussed at council meetings? How can we find out what the new structure will be? And will we get a schedule of when those meetings are held?
Yeah, all, sorry, all public meetings will be certainly be notified. You'll be notified of any public meetings. We have a bit of a structure change this year. We have a CAO now in addition to a clerk. So things are going to change a little bit. Rather than having an admin meeting, she will have a report to council, which will be made public.
Okay. And that will actually start this evening, so I will be reading in. So everybody can hear and the public can hear. So what I did, everything that we kind of had in previously at our admin. I will be bringing those forward in this report so that you know what is going on. If it happens to be something that is closed to the public that we need to speak to about, we'll speak with, about them in closed session. And then the next month, when it is available for public, then I will add that to my report. And they will also, I'm going to put them out on social media.
Okay, so they won't be separate meetings then?
No, it will actually be in council, and it will be a report that the public, all of the public can have. We'll try that for a couple of months just to see if that works. If it doesn't, then we'll go back. This administrative meeting was actually my meeting. It was more of a, a staff meeting kind of thing. It was more or less just to bring council up to date on things that was actually happening in my office, which is operational. Technically, we do not have to have these reports. Operational is under my direction. Counsel is governance. So, but because there's really for staff, Sherry and I, many times I had to reach out to the public, or to the public, oh, to council, to help me with projects and stuff like that. As we are growing, and I'm going to be able to hire additional staff, then we need to learn to make that break and be operational in governance. So going forward, at least for the next couple of months, we're going to try this. If public counsel feels that they're not getting enough information, then we'll look at a different avenue.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else from the public? All right, moving on. Oh, sorry.
Just a quick question, I, in reference to the budget process. I've yet to see anything. Are we expected, the public expected to receive anything from, from the public, from the council as far as where your tax rate is going to be and what the impact is going to be? And I, I forward something to the resident of Handwell, and all I get back as feedback is that I'm not going to get an answer. We're not, taxpayers are not going to get an answer till January thirtieth on any of the issues. Because there's, my concern is, has there been a lot of impact assessed, residential incest?
Assessments.
Assessment impact. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the expenditures of council. Salaries, not so much salaries, but stipends from council. Those are the kind of questions I have, and capital expense, here's some what have you.
Should we need that?
So ultimately, I would have expected that a while, you know, a couple of months ago, but it's still, it's not, still not available to the general.
Does that answer that as well?
What's that?
Would you want me to take this over as well?
Normally, we have our budget approved through local government long before this. But with government reform this, this year with all the new entities and whatnot, government, of course, is backed up. And they have not yet approved our budget, so our budget's still confidential until it's approved by local government. That's typical. We never release our budget until we get approval from the, from the province. So that's where we're at with it.
Yeah, so this year, the whole budget process was completely different. Any other year, council was always involved in the budget. This year, local government did the budget. So they had an advisory committee that consisted of members of the, of Kingsclere, and we had a couple of our counselors that were on this advisory transition team. So they kind of talked about the whole reform, but the budget was a big part of it. I actually asked, us, Handwell and Oremoto were the only communities that did not have to go to election. Our councils stayed the same, and we just had other members join. So I had asked the local government if my council could be part of the budget. However, the minister is actually the one that had the final say. So I did, we had a few meetings, we did the budget. The budget is extremely tight this year because I did not want the taxes for the new entities to go up substantially from being local service districts. So we brought those forward, and the province has actually changed a couple of them. But I am expecting to have my approved budget back this week. And I am going to do, as the treasurer, I will do a report and send out so everybody knows. Because this is a very unusual year for all of us when it comes to the budget. But I think everybody will be, I hope everybody's pleased with the budget. We really, we kept things very tight this year just for those reasons. Because we knew assessments went high, we knew that the Kingsclere residents were going to see a jump. Local government brought in five services to the, I want to call it the Regional Service Commission? It isn't, well, it is.
Capital Regional Service Commission.
Yes, so those were mandated. They came with a cost, and we had absolutely no say in it. So it was like, we never paid into economic development before. We have a huge payment now for economic development. Tourism was another one. Public safety, affordable housing and inclusions, like there was, I always forget my fifth one.
Transportation.
Oh, the public transportation. So those alone, when you are mandated to add those to your budget, we had to really think, okay, like assessments are high. We have these five new services that we've never paid into before. So we had to cut, we had to cut some stuff, and we really got a tight budget. But I think you'll be pleased with the budget as long as when I get it back, that is what the province has approved. So I really expect, probably by next week, I'll be able to have something out to our residents on tax and expenditures and stuff like that. I hope that, did that answer?
Yeah, but I do have a subsequent question.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to know if there's no pre-budget, preliminary budget that me as a taxpayer or any of these individuals as taxpayers can see what you're proposing to the government?
Yes.
And if there isn't, who do I contact at the local governance to find out who I can complain to? Because this should be totally transparent. We should be able to know exactly what we're proposing on your budget. And it should be clear to the public, you know, what priorities this municipality has, not what council has, what this municipality has. So is there a contact person that I can?
I would kind of have local government, Minister Alen, because, like I said, this year for the entire province, Minister Alen signed off on the budgets. He was the one that was in charge of the budget. So we could have put in astronomical amounts, he would have.
So I go directly to the minister?
I, I would if you have. Or I would wait until you kind of see what we have proposed. And it's not even what we have proposed, it's what they have actually told us as well.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. It's not what, what serves, it's the process.
I, I agree. Mr. Corley, you and I have agreed on the process of budget more times than probably anybody. And I think next year, you will see a big one that members of our public will be part of it. This year, like really, our council wasn't even allowed to be as part of it because it literally was the province that was telling us what to do with our budget kind of thing. But because of the circumstances, and my council was not changing, I had asked for council to attend these meetings.
Not, not very, it's very authoritarian type of approach, and I'll, I'll talk to Minister myself.
Well, and to kind of, Handwell was lucky because, well, how do I say lucky? I was always the one that did the budgets. I was able to do this one as well, comparing it to our previous years. I know many municipalities this year, they did not even get to do their budget. Like their CAO, their clerk, their treasurer, nothing got to do their budgets. Their facilitators did them. So we're kind of, at least you had a little input into it, so. It, we didn't agree with all of the process either, but when you're told from higher up that's what you have to do, then.
Appreciate your response, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Kinsey, you have a question?
No, she already covered it, said most of the municipalities had no state at all. We're lucky to even be able to see it, quite frankly, in a preliminary state.
All right, any disclosures, council?
No.
Yes, I have, I'm kind of a little conflicted. Of course, I'm going to be missing number nineteen because it is about me, nineteen A.
And that'll, sorry, that will be under disclosures.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my thought, sorry. Yeah, Holly. Isn't that what we're doing now? Yeah, that's what we're doing now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were still on public.
No, no. I apologize. Yeah, so nineteen A, but as it turns out, nineteen B is about me. But I've been informed that I should be here because it's something pursuant to nineteen B. And I should at least get that information. I probably won't stay for the entire thing because I don't want to be tied into it.
So what we will do actually, when we go into closed session, we'll do nineteen B first.
Yep, makes sense.
And then if you wish to leave, but once again, you're more than welcome to stay, so.
Okay, moving on, reports. We have Chief Kreis here for the fire department report.
Good evening, mayor, council, and the public. December was a fairly busy month. We had forty-one runs. Think about the only day that we didn't go out was Christmas Day.
Nope, I was on Christmas Day. I had a home Christmas.
And also something, not a hell of much, but we had nine fires in December. One of them was fire, and the rest were residential fires.
Very busy.
Okay. Any questions from the fire report?
Really?
There's been a very busy time, Chief Kreis.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did get to see the fire department in action. There was a house fire just down the street from me on Marlowe. And I was just happy to walk in by at the same, with my dog, the same time they were arriving at the fire, a lot of smoke committed to the building. But you, you talk about a well-oiled machine. There was no, everybody knew their duties, they just went right to it. There was no confusion. Man, those, those folks really know what they're doing. I was, I was impressed.
So, any other questions?
Not really.
Very good, have a good evening.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Great work.
Appreciate it.
Motion received, fire department report.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Thank you, council.
And if someone in order we skip three A.
You want the deck?
Do it.
Yep, I got the deck.
Yeah.
I, I made it work.
Boom, 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 deck? My bad.
Okay, so moving on, we have presentations tonight by the Capital Region Service Commission. So we'll, we'll turn the floor over to you folks.
My name's Robin Kenman, and I have the application for combined holdings and investments limited. It's an application to create one lot on a private access. The access is owned and maintained by the local association. So the property is located on Caswood Drive. The properties are, I'm looking like for properties. And the buildings on the properties are being subdivided. The land is being subdivided around the buildings on the properties. I think this might be the last one to be done, so one more lot on separating a building on the property. Land for public purposes does not apply here as per section nine-two-C of the Land for Public Purposes document, which states that if there is a usable main building on the property at the time, then it doesn't apply. The lots are serviced by communal septic and individual wells. And the minimum area for lots serviced by communal septic systems and individual wells are six hundred and seventy-two square meters. The lots on these, on this property meets the requirements. There's no wetlands or watercourses. There were no entry department consultations. Since the lots on an existing access, a site distance report wasn't needed. And as a lot is serviced by communal septic, septic assessments are not required. So in order to create a lot on a right-of-way for private access, approval must be received by the Prac of the Capital Region Service Commission. So staff of Capital Region Service Commission is requesting comments from the Rural Community of Handwell Council prior to the planning, review, and adjustment committee meeting, making its decision on January thirty-first. I don't know if there are any questions about any of the maps that have been included with it. There's a copy of the survey plan. Survey and benthic map showing where the lots are going to be. Maps and GOMB showing the, where the location of the building on the property. And the last document is land for public purposes.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions for Robin?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to help.
Yeah, I'll read the recommendation. So staff recommends that the Rural Community of Handwell Council recommend that the planning, review, and adjustment committee of the Capital Region Service Commission approve a twenty-meter-wide private access for the development of land as shown on plan combined holdings and investments limited, subdivision number two-oh-two-two-dash-two, subject to the final plan of subdivision being stamped with the private access number.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Can I get a motion from council, please?
I would, I would make the motion to accept the staff's recommendation or Sealer or Capital Region Service Commission's.
No, it's, you have.
Oh, I have the motion here, sorry. I, I move that the Rural Community of Handwell recommend that the planning and the new adjustment committee of the Capital Region Service Commission approve a twenty-meter-wide private access for the development of land as shown on plan combined holdings and investments limited, subdivision number two, 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 two-two-dash-two, subject to the final plan of subdivision being stamped with the private access number.
A second.
Any questions, council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Holly?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Motion carried, thank you. So we have another presentation tonight from the Capital Region Service Commission due to unsightly premises.
All right, I'll give a few handouts. Thank you. Leave you one, and I'll leave you one for Holly.
So Councilor Highsleth, he has left a copy here for you.
Did you get that, Holly?
Councilor Highsleth.
On the premises?
Um, yes, so it's just, I'll be doing the presentation, but I'll leave you a copy.
Okay, perfect.
I'd like to thank the mayor and council for an opportunity to appear tonight and try to explain how unsightly premises and dangerous properties work. This is the same presentation that we have given to a few other councils. The one thing I would like to premise is that Handwell now is comprised of Handwell and annexed areas. There was a perception that the annexed areas would be susceptible to the same rules and regulations and benefits that the village proper was. Minister Alen has, in his infinite wisdom, not given that responsibility to the rural community or the annexed areas. The rural communities will still receive their, their unsightly bylaw enforcement from the province. So having, having that out of the way. Basically, we get our authority through the Local Governance Act. So offenses and penalties relating to dangers and unsightly premises comes from section one-thirty-one bracket one. No person shall permit premises owned or occupied by him or her to be unsightly by permitting to remain on any part of the property, ashes, junk, refuse, rubbish, and accumulation of wood shavings, paper sawdust, or other residue of production or construction, a derelict vehicle, equipment, machinery, or the body or part of a vehicle, equipment, or machinery, or dilapidated building. So if you consider something like tall grass or alder bushes to be unsightly and it doesn't fit into any of these definitions, then it's not unsightly. If, if we go to page three, I'll give, I have a pretty good example of this. The picture on the left is of a burnt-out restaurant in Chipman. Not only was it unsightly, it was declared dangerous. The picture on the right shows an overgrown lot, but there's nothing unsightly or dangerous about it by the act. So the process, the process can be fairly long and contains seventeen steps. And we follow these seventeen steps for all of our unsightly premises files. The number of steps that we take is going to depend on the reaction we get from the property owner and decisions made by council. So step one, upon receiving the address from the clerk's office, a compliance officer from our office pays a site visit to determine if the building in question qualifies as an unsightly premises under the provincial guidelines. We do not accept complaints or requests from the general public with respect to unsightly because at the end of the day, if council decides to follow through, it's council that has to make the motion to spend the public money to address it. So we ask that the public contact the clerk's office, and the clerk sends it through the act. If the location qualifies, we have the building inspected by two of our building inspectors. They assess the condition, determine if the building can be rehabilitated or if it's beyond repair, it must be demolished. A report is generated by the inspectors and is forwarded to the clerk. We then check with the provincial property tax authority, determine if they have begun collection or tax sale process for any of the outstanding unpaid property taxes. We inform the province that we are proceeding under the Unsightly Premises Act for the particular municipality that it is in, so that no collection by the province will be started during our procedure. The reason this is important is if we put a note on the file when we get to the end of the day that we spend money, the municipality can submit to the province to have all of that money they've spent reimbursed. However, if a tax sale process is started, they will not reimburse the municipality. So it's important that I don't miss this step. We then contact the owner by letter or by telephone if possible. We make them aware of the issues found by our inspectors, set up a schedule to repair or tear down the building. If they do not within, act within the time period indicated in the letter, we will proceed to the next step. Time can vary from fourteen days to agreed-upon time period with the owner, except in emergencies. If it's considered an emergency, it's a much shorter timeframe. The burnt restaurant in Chipman, the photo showed you earlier, in all years I've done this, that was the only one that we considered to be an emergency. We contact the clerk to get a motion from council authorizing the spending of money to take the action amended in the inspection report. We notify the clerk that if we proceed, any outstanding sewer bills that the municipality may have will be forfeited. That doesn't apply in Handwell's case, but it does in other municipalities. We develop a notice to be signed and notarized by the clerk. We deliver the notice to the registry office for registration. We deliver the notice to the owner in the person, in person, or by registered mail. If the property is abandoned and we can't make contact with the owner, we then post, the act gives us permission to post the notice on the building or on the property. We try to do all three, and then there's no questions. We develop a tender document detailing the work to be done, provide the top, the document to the clerk to issue a tender. At this point, the owner of the property is informed that there's a timeframe for them to appeal the proceedings directly to council. Many owners will never appeal to council. That's been the, the case most of the time. If no action results from the meeting between the owner and council, council will award the tender for the demolition and remedial work, as the case may be. A building inspector inspects the property to confirm that the work has been done per the tender. The municipality tries to collect the cost of the tender and any fees from the owners. The municipality must try twice to collect the fees in order to reimburse the province. If the owner pays, a building inspector, development officer from the Region Service Commission eleven, which is now Capital Region Service Commission, prepares a release document for signing by the clerk and register the document in the registry office. If the owner does not pay, the clerk applies to the province for reimbursement. The clerk must show how the village tried to collect the bill. The province reimburses the village for the tender amount and the fees. Capital Region, once you've received your money from the province, Capital Region Service Commission again prepares a release document for signing by the clerk that gets registered in the registry office, and the file gets closed. So timelines, and timelines can vary. Some homeowners, when you bring it to their attention, are fairly dutyous about it. Some homeowners, when you bring it to their attention, are fairly dubious about it and they'll get the work to do it. Some of them don't have the necessary funds right away. It's always easier if we can work with the homeowner and give them a bit of time to get it done. If they ignore us, or they don't want to do it, or they can't do it, we then will proceed through the seventeen steps. Six to eight months is kind of a usual timeframe. Sometimes one will be started in one calendar year and it will extend into the second calendar year. So on page ten, there's, or page twelve, there's a timeline. So the site visit, that's one to two days. The building inspectors fit this in with their other work, that's seven to ten days. The tax notification, that takes a couple of days to send that off. It may take only a couple of days to get a response back, sometimes it'll take a couple of weeks. We try numerous times and numerous ways to contact the homeowner, from visit to the property to checking Service New Brunswick to see where they may own other property and live, to phone calls, to emails. Whatever we can do to contact them, we try to do that. Depending on when we get on the council meeting, that's one to four weeks scheduled. When we do the notice, that's a two to three week notice. We do a tender package, that doesn't take very long, two or three days. There's a time period that we have to give the owner to appeal, that can vary from one to four weeks. And generally, we give the person who is awarded the tender about a month to clean the property up. We contact the owner, or the clerk contacts the owner for reimbursement, twice, usually about two weeks apart, so that takes a month, and we send it to the province for reimbursement. If you have the document, let's say we tore one down in September and we had all of our items done, and we can send it to the province by the middle of December, you will get your money early in the new year. If for some reason you missed the middle of December getting it off to them, and it happens to land January, February, you are going to wait a whole year before you get reimbursed. So we had one mayor that liked to tear things down in November, and when he did, it just cost the village to carry that amount of money for a whole extra year instead of waiting.
Is that kind of because of a budget? Like they would budget something for to reimburse?
I don't know if it's a budget thing, but it's a timeline. If we don't have it to them by the middle of December, they will not process it. So you get your money in the first two or three months of the next year. If it's later, then it's a whole year. So it's just the way that they work. So I spoke earlier about an emergency. So in the act, it allows us to do things if it's an emergency. That power comes under section 139 bracket one. If on inspection of a property under section 144, and that's the unsightly part, or dangerous part, a bylaw enforcement officer referred to in that section is satisfied there is a nonconformity with the provisions of this part to such an extent as to propose an emergency, the bylaw enforcement officer may prepare and sign a notice referred to in section 132 of the act, requiring the owner or the occupier of the premises, building, or other structure in respect to which the notice is prepared to immediately carry out the work to terminate the danger. These are more for structurally unsound buildings as opposed to something that's just unsightly. 139 bracket two is saying that after we prepare the document in bracket one and sign the notice, the bylaw enforcement officer may, either before or after the notice is given, take any measures necessary to terminate the danger, giving rise to the emergency. And for this purpose, the bylaw enforcement officer who prepared the notice and authorized employees of the local government or other persons acting on behalf of the local government may at any time enter the premises, building, or structure with respect to which the notice is prepared. This gives us the authority to shorten up the time period to which we can tender and tear it down. So section fifteen is all about success stories. We, in our territory that we enforce, we've had two municipalities that have had many more unsightly and dangerous buildings than all of our other ones, and they are Menlo and Chipman. So if on page sixteen, we look at, you know, 172 Post Road, the building was burnt. Homeowner had no fire insurance. They walked away from it. It was open. People could get in it. That property in the pictures on the side, you'll see, was completely torn down. The lot was left there. Eight sixty Pleasant Drive was a huge industrial building, again, open to the public, dangerous, dilapidated. We had it torn down, and the lot was leveled and flattened. We got this huge building tore down for $29,000. There is a very competitive market for tearing things down in the Menlo and Chipman area. In Melville, I paid $29,000 to have one house torn down, so if that gives you an example. Menlo and Chipman have the advantage of being very close to a construction and debris waste site, whereas most of our other municipalities have a huge trucking cost to take the debris away. We require them to take it to a construction debris waste site and bring receipts in before they're paid. We don't want this dumped and somebody back loose. The one that you see on page eighteen, this is the restaurant that was on Main Street in Chipman and was completely tore down. The lot was left there. Hillcrest was a building that was burnt. The basement was saved. It was starting to crumble and cave in. Kids could fall in it. It became dangerous. We had that remediated. The building on page twenty was in Chipman across from the high school. Me and one of the other building inspectors could not stand side to side with the building supports inside. It was very dangerous, and the students from the school were using it for extracurricular activities, so the town cut right around, tore that down, again, if it left the land vacant. Most of the ones that we deal with are abandoned. We have dealt with cases whereby somebody might be a hoarder, they've had a fire. They can't afford to remediate it, but they're still living there. In those cases, we will work with the person if it won't work, if they're willing to work with us. Basically, we do all the steps. We prepare the tender. The day the contractor goes there to demolish and paint it up, we have the municipality contact the RCMP. They remove the owner of the property until the work is done, and then they're allowed to come back. That would conclude my report.
Thank you, Alani. Any questions for Alani?
So you mentioned right at the start there that the annexed areas, it seems unusual, of course, to have done this, but they did, not surprisingly, isn't included now in this, in the new entity. Do you know if that's just for the one-year thing, like transportation services and stuff are, or is that just a complete open-ended question?
We do not have any indication from the province. In our area, there were a number of new municipalities created. Those that were villages, towns, or municipalities are not restricted with that statement. They can create a new bylaw that encompasses the whole boundaries of their municipality, and the unsightly bylaw will apply throughout it. The ones that are rural communities, the rural communities, for whatever reason, were not given that authority. And whether that is a budgetary thing from the province or the minister wanting to keep that authority, I can't answer that. All I know is that is what he's done.
Yeah, thanks.
As a follow-up to Darren's question, you mentioned that if a member of the public in Hamel Rural Community has a complaint, they would approach the clerk rather than you folks directly. Who do residents of the annexed areas approach then?
You would also approach your clerk. And there is somebody at the province that looks after or deals with unsightly premises. They tend not to be as vigorous about it in enforcing it as our offices.
So the clerk would contact that person on the act with the resident of the annexed area?
Or they will contact me, and I'll contact that person. Unsightly in the LSP areas, the areas that were annexed, still contact the clerk.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Alani. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We have the rural plan. This is also being presented by the Capitol Region Service Commission.
Counselor Heissle, I have your copy of this as well.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll just begin by introducing myself. I'm Isabelle Valette. I'm a planner with the Central Region Capitol Service.
Capitol Region Service Commission.
I was trying to remember, and I was like, oh, geez, I can't. I always want to say just RCL, but I'll get to there eventually. So, yes, it does. So I have a handout for everyone in front of you. It's, I'm planning to just have a very, very high-level overview look at the rural plan as well as the process, because as I was mentioning earlier, prior to the meeting commencing, that the Hamel community, including Kings Clear, the new Hamel entity, is going to be having its plan reviewed. And for that purpose, one of the big reasons is knowing what a rural plan is. So it looks at land use planning specifically. So sometimes you can hear it being referred to as the official plan, the municipal plan, rural plan. They're all very similar. They do a lot of the same thing in the sense of they provide a very, very high-level plan directing the land development in Hamel for future development. So it's looking forward, so it's less focused necessarily on what's exactly happening on the ground as of right this second, but it has a 25-year goal in mind. So it's saying, this is what's happening, this is where you want to be in the future. So the way that this is achieved is that the plan is composed of policies. So the policies are what communicate the long-term desired land uses for the community. So when I'm talking about land uses, I'm talking about like, where do you want any future schools? Where do you want your industrial section, your residential communities? How you want your residential communities to look? You want to have complete communities where you can walk down the street from your neighbor and go get a coffee or like go to the corner store to get some sundries for your, I mean, maybe you forgot eggs or something for a recipe. So it's looking at those types of things, and that's the policies that are going to be driving that. So the other things could be, what do you want in the sense of neighborhoods regarding the concern for water intake? Because if you're concerned about water, you would want to create a plan for 25 years, knowing that you can develop in the future in that way, instead of going, oh, Darren, I didn't appropriately plan, and now we have problems, issues, or water problems. So that's something that the plan would be addressing. Zoning is one of the main ways that you address your policies. So that's what is saying what you can do where. So for example, if you have a property that's zoned institution, you could do a school there. If you have a property that's zoned commercial, you could have like a restaurant, for example. So that's kind of the thing that most people think about when they think about land use. So what you can do through zoning is directed by your policy. So that's why that's the biggest, highest, most important thing. And when it comes to the municipality level, it is your highest level of document when it comes to land use. If you would like to do a subdivision by law, which you already have, but if you wanted to amend it or if you wanted to create a secondary plan, for example, looking at your whole lake and how that develops, it has to be in conformity with your municipal plan. So for example, if you said, our municipal plan is that we want to have the park right over here be protected, and then you made a secondary plan, out of the wild, I'm not proposing anything, but it was proposed that you wanted to tear it down and put a subdivision in there, and that was your secondary plan, well, your municipal plan would overrule that secondary plan. So that's why it's very important to have all your policies fleshed out, to provide that direction for counsel, how you're interpreting people coming forward with rezoning. So all of this is what's going to be informing your decision-making, informing our commission's decisions. And like I mentioned, it is the highest level of document when it comes to land use. So the first page that has the blue and everything like that is kind of just like a really quick little re-plant at what exactly it entails, so you can look at that and it'll hopefully kind of make you go, oh, I get it. This is, if I'm concerned about conflicts between different uses, like a house being put next to an industrial use, then you can start kind of thinking about what that municipal plan would be directing. And because if we're going to be going up to a review of the plan, there's a brief overview of what that process will entail. You're probably looking at two years. It is a long process because there are multiple, multiple steps. This is a very, very brief overview of what that actually entails. So the two years is actually, it's probably two and a plus years because a lot of it has to do with committee consultation, stakeholder engagement. So if you want to have a group with councilors and have them sit on a specific different committee, then you can make that happen, and that would also influence the plan. Often times we have working groups, and then the community comes and it becomes engaged. We have a lot of public engagement. As you can see, the, there's a, the public engagement and the working groups, stakeholder meetings, those are all to do with public engagement. You're probably looking at it here of just doing that alone. And as those progress, we're able to actually write the plan as we go, so we continuously have feedback. And it's like a little of a cycle loop where we write something, we get feedback, and we make it better, and then we keep moving forward and forward, until we have something that gets presented to counsel. And then it has to also go to the provincial government because it has to be in conformity with provincial requirements. And that also includes the statements of public interest, which will be coming out in the near future, which will be directing how plans are allowed to be created. So for example, if the province comes out with a statement that says you have to protect agricultural land, and your zone says that you want to get rid of all agricultural land, the minister is within his rights to say, no, I don't agree with this, and you'd have to rehash your new plan. So as you can see, it's a very long process. We're at the very beginning, the little blue dot is where we are right now, and that's creating the background report. Hopefully, we'll have a community survey, but at this point, all planning services and public engagement is provided by Capitol Region Service Commission for the rural community of Hamel. So we'll be coming back to the public and providing, or getting their comments and including that in the background report, and then going for a formal open house, and then having people come in and talk to us that way. And that's going to be really the first time that you're going to see that engagement and that more forefront in the public aspect of it. Right now, I've been working on a background report since August, and so that's coming towards its end. So we're hopefully going to be stepping into the next step soon, but like I mentioned, we're still in the background report as of now. Is there any question? Yes.
So our last one was done in 2014, and we're supposed to do a review every five years, but of course, there's lots of stuff that went on in the COVID, and now the municipal reform stuff. So I guess the obvious question, you kind of touched on this, but I just want to try to clarify. Is this going to be something like similar to the, the... that the, well, we just had a presentation on here. I've already forgot. Unslightly premises issue where it's like Hanwell has it and then the existing Kings Clear has it? Or are we actually going to merge them now this time or the next couple of years?
So the, so Kings Clear currently has a regulation. So that's administered by the minister himself. And so they're going to be getting a rural plan just like you. It's going to be one rural plan. So they're, it would be all the time.
So it'll be all of this though? Will it be like separated between the two sections or?
It'll be completely one plan. There's other aspects of planning that can be introduced. So you can do secondary plans, for example. So if you're very concerned about, for example, there being a specific area in Kings Clear or a specific area in Hanwell that you want to really have a specific plan there, you can make a secondary plan. But for the municipal plan, it would be the entire rural community entity.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Debbie, go ahead.
Could you repeat that? Kings Clear now has a regulation? Because I participated in the rural plan development for Kings Clear LSD and the zoning. So where did that go? Did that disappear in the municipal reform or?
So that's still in place. So that went, when that was finished, it went to the minister. So the minister is the one who oversaw the implementation of it in the sense of like, we were the boots on the ground, but he's the one who made the final decision. So it's still in place as of now. It will only get repealed or replaced once this plan is adopted.
And could I ask one more?
Sure.
You mentioned statements of public interest. So that's a government, province-wide initiative? That all rural planning or all municipal plans will have to respect?
Yep. So there's two specific, or three things I should say. There's the Community Planning Act and the Local Governance Act, which has a lot of, quite a few people know what the Local Governance Act. Well, the Community Planning Act is the provincial bible, you would say, for planning. And separate to that, they're going to have the statements of public interest, which will be even bigger picture. So it's, it's, it would be quite as like needy, greedy of like following stuff necessarily. It's going to be a very big picture. Everything has to follow that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Isabel?
Paul, any questions?
No, I'm good right now.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Gives us a little understanding of where we're going to.
You guys are free to leave. You don't have to stay if you don't.
I mean, you can if you want. You know what? Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate your time. Okay, moving on. We have item eight, permit applications. There were no building permits supplied for in the month of December. Proclamations, we have none. Petitions and delegations, we don't have any. Business horizons, clear. Correspondents, I believe we have. Was there a correspondent? No correspondents, okay. So moving on to item 13, meetings and special events. We have the mayor's report. Hope everybody's got the copy up. Any questions on the mayor's report? Got a motion to approve the mayor's report, please?
I move to receive the mayor's report as presented.
Secondary?
A secondary.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded? Mostly carried, thank you council. Committee reports, age-friendly did not meet. Communications did not meet. Economic development did not meet. Governance measures did not meet. Finance did not meet. Government policies did not meet. Parks and recreation did not meet.
Welcome to Christmas.
Christmas month, not a whole lot of people feel like attending meetings. Okay, so item 15, we have the CAO slash treasurer's report.
Okay, so this is what I was speaking about earlier. And each month I will read this so that anybody in the public can hear the honor when we do it. As the newly elected chief administrative officer slash treasurer, each month I will be providing council a report of administrative issues that are happening within our municipality. This report will be shared with the public. And if there are any issues that need to be discussed with council that are not open to the public, these will be discussed in closed session as per the local governance act. And once they are public, they will be, sorry, they will be shared on this report. This report will also serve as the previous treasurer's report. So under municipal reform, I broke it down into a few items. So fire services. Currently, we are getting all the accounts for fire services switched over to Hanwell. And the fire chief has a lot of accounts. We have the licenses, the fleet cards, local stores, restaurants, truck registrations, insurance policies, WorkSafe, New Brunswick, et cetera. So other requirements, there are still many projects that need to be completed over the following couple of months. Review of bylaws and policies to include our new entities. Rental agreements for the upper Kings Clear community center. Staff requirements, MOUs with public safety and local government. HR requirements for staff and fire services. And the province will reimburse Hanwell for any legal costs or transfer fees necessary to transfer all of our assets. So as soon as we get the fire halls, community center, all of our trucks transferred, those costs I will be bringing back to the province and will get reimbursed because it shouldn't be a Hanwell expense. So staffing and departments. Sherry Johnson, our previous assistant clerk, has been appointed by Minister Lynn as the clerk after I was appointed as the CAO treasurer, which is the chief administrative officer. An assistant clerk will be hired in the coming months as well as a recreation coordinator due to the addition of various new programs that can be developed due to the newly acquired park and community center in upper Kings Clear. With these new positions, new job descriptions, agreements and contracts will be required, including training. So the Island View facility. Public safety, EML and local government are currently renting office and storage space. The CAO will be meeting with public safety the week of January the 16th to discuss a rental agreement. Newly elected councillors, congratulations to Debbie Pack and Lee Crowse, who were sworn in on January the 5th. The councillors were provided an orientation binder of our policies, bylaws, minutes, various reports, forms, et cetera. And local government is providing training on Wednesday and Thursday evening, starting tomorrow night, for eight weeks for all of council. And as well, UMNB will be providing training on Saturday, February the 11th and Sunday, the 12th. So storage building construction. Due to the numerous steps that have occurred, council has discussed that a storage building is required. The CAO has asked CRSV, which is formerly the Regional Service Commission, so Lonnie, to speak to council at a separate meeting to discuss what council wants to construct and what products they want to use. Once these are determined, we will send this out to tender. Part of this building can be paid through through the Canada Community Building Fund, which was formerly the gas tax fund. And the CAO will investigate some grant funding. So this building is going to be right out here. So we are running out of storage and we've had three thefts so far. So we need to get things undercover. Meeting with DTI Minister Jeff Carr. The mayor and CAO met with Minister Carr on January the 13th. There were many issues that were discussed. Speed limit reduction on Route 640. Traffic issues at Greenview Drive. Residents' concerns that have been brought forward to the clerk's office. Roads, erosion on private property. These will be, they will be investigating our concerns and will provide the CAO an update. And these updates will be in a future report. Request for documentation. Currently, the CAO and clerk are very busy gathering documents for various artip requests. Third-party investigators, lawyers, local government and our auditors. These requests have time limits. So all other daily requirements and projects are probably going to be put on hold for the next four to five weeks. Canada summer jobs and seed. Staff has submitted our application for our summer students to the government. We have applied for three students for parks and trail and one for recreation. And we will advertise these positions once we obtain approval. So as part of my treasurer's report, the budget, council and the transition advisory committee drafted a very tight budget for 2023. It was their intention to keep the tax rate as low as possible due to the amalgamation and the increase in assessments. The province has implemented new mandated services for regional tourism, economic development, community development, regional transportation and a public safety committee. These costs make up approximately five cents of the tax rate. So our 2023 budget has been submitted to the province. They did make a couple of changes. And once the approved budget is returned, the CAO treasurer will be releasing a report. So year-end transfers. A forecast was done in the middle of December to determine the cost of outstanding policies and revenues until the end of the year. After that forecast was done, $50,000 was transferred from our general operating fund to our capital reserve fund for future projects. So as per our purchasing policy, only non-budgeted payments over $5,000 require council's approval. And for this month, there wasn't any that I needed approved. So this is the type of report that I will be presenting and I will put it out on social media and our website and stuff. So as I said, we will try this process for the next few months. See if it works. See if the public finds that they have enough information from it. And then we'll take adjustments from there.
Motion to receive the CAO treasurer's report dated January 2023?
Secondary?
All secondary.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a question. I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay, so under DTI, did we ever receive any traffic study that we had requested about the speed limit reduction on Route 640? Did we get anything back?
No, we didn't. They, we actually brought that up. And they said that they will provide us a letter to talk about the speed limit reduction because we need to have the speed limit reduced before sidewalks or crosswalks could ever go in. So they said there are processes. So this will be the one that they are going to look at and they will provide that back. And I will give everybody their response from that. And then we'll just keep carrying on. We actually had a very good meeting with them, so.
Okay, well, that's good because, I mean, it kind of leads into my next question then. With the Hanwell Park Academy being there and having our memorandum of understanding and community use of school agreements in place, which we don't have yet.
Nope.
So it's important to have that reduction because there's going to be more kids and residents utilizing the school, right? Anyway, so the next question becomes, is under budget. What changes did they make?
I don't know. I just know that they said that they had made a couple of changes with the Kings Clear entities. And I'm waiting, I'm, I'm in the dark as much as everybody else, unfortunately. I really, I, I expect to have this back this week and will know more. I don't, you know how we had some costs under shared and some under the individual entities? I'm not sure. They just switched some of those out. So as I said, I will advise everybody as soon as I receive it back. This is the most unusual year that I have done budget in my 18 years of municipal government, so.
Yeah, it doesn't seem the right way to do things. Anyway, okay, no, that's enough for me, Sherry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Councilor Fox.
I just had a question as a follow-up to councillor Highslop's question. In terms of, so this, the letter with respect to the reduction in the speed. So any, did they give us any indication as to the timing or the process of this? Or is that all coming in this letter?
Everything is going to come in this letter.
Okay.
They said that they would go into
Look at the soon sponsor.
Details and stuff, so.
Councillor Pack.
As a follow-up to councillor Fox and councillor Highslop, I just wanted to inform you that when I was chair of the Local Services District Advisory Committee for Kings Clear LSD, we had a significant effort to have the speed on Route 102 reduced. So there's correspondence with, I think, three different ministers. It took that many years. And there is a report somewhere at DTI about a traffic study. It was never provided either. For information purposes, I'll present that.
Yep, something to look into. Make note of that.
Thank you.
All right.
Mind just a quick question or clarification there? That in the area that we're discussing, it's all the way from Massilman Road, I think, to Camber?
Camber, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's what they're looking into and they're certainly going to get back to us.
Okay.
But they did make the commitment to look into it and get it to us. And the minister was there, the deputy minister was there and the administrative executive assistant was there. So all the top dogs were there, so I don't think we missed anybody. Okay, any more questions? Can I get a motion, please?
We did.
Did. As of the vote.
We did make the vote.
So all those in favor of accepting the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Mostly carried, thank you council. Older unfinished business, item 16, accessibility trail. There's no update on that as of tonight.
It's the church. On this, it's wrong, like on our cheat sheet. But on the agenda, it's actually the church.
So there's no update. There's no update. There's no update.
No, there's no update. Okay, great. So moving on, under new business, we have some bylaw to start the cleanup. So we need.
I'll move to that amendment to bylaw 16-2019, bylaw establishing code of conduct for council. Do you give that its first read by title?
I'll second that.
Any questions?
I do. Can we table this for a couple of weeks at the very least? I feel like we're in the middle of something and I think that has to be resolved before we start moving into some things. I have no idea what this is about. I have no idea where it's coming from. We're reading first and second. I have no concept of what's going on. And I don't think that's a fair process. Normally we'd have it pointed in min session where we can talk about this and go through it. But I don't have anything right now, so I'd ask to table it at least for another month.
We certainly can. I will just say, just about all of our policies say that the clerk is the head.
So that's what we're changing?
So, and all of this is going to still come back to council for review?
If that's what we're changing, then I would.
So we're doing that and possibly other ones after we finish what we are going through and get.
Changing the languages. If it's just changing the language, I'm fine.
Or whatever, but if you want to, then we can.
Just as one of us followed that. So there's a few of them actually that we're doing tonight. Notice it's all the title only because the governance and policy committee wasn't really able to meet until after the committees were finalized tonight. So we don't have any information as to what exactly is changing in any of this stuff yet. It has to be reviewed by the committee and then it'll come to council and public and so. That's fair. So we just don't know yet.
So normally like what we do is anytime we do our first readings or first and second readings, it is to tell the public that changes are coming. And then we will all meet. The governance committee will meet, make changes, bring those changes forward to council. So it's, well, it's just to notify council or notify council and the public that. So it's, well, it's just to notify council or notify council and the public that there are changes coming.
So I have a question then. So on that note, yes, I understand, like, we're just doing the reading by title to ensure that, you know, everyone knows that changes are coming up. But since we are not having admin sessions anymore where we, you know, can get together and discuss changes or whatever, how are we going to do that then? Are we just?
So I think that governance committee will meet. We could have a special meeting of council to discuss this, just like if it was in min, public was allowed to come, so we would just have a special meeting, and we could kind of review two or three or four or five, however many bylaws at the time. And if public would like to attend, then they have that right to attend as they always did in our admin sessions, so.
And I think we could post it online as well, so for at least 14 days, right?
Yes.
So we could feedback from public questioning. So council, we could be able to review at the same time as well, right?
Yeah.
Wonder what we figured out.
We're really going to have to promote that then, that public can provide feedback.
We always have.
That way to bring it back. Have we had much feedback though?
No.
Okay, has it been put in the Hamill Herald, like that this is the way it's going to be? And that, and that maybe if you have anything, then you can provide it that way. I'm just thinking the Hamill Herald, you know, it gets to everybody, not everybody has Facebook or goes on social media, so it might be something moving forward to do.
Except the drawback there is the Herald only comes up quarterly.
I think she means just initial, just to let people, make people aware that might not be, that aren't following our social media, whatever, something.
Well, I mean, just, uh, this is, these are changes that have happened in council or whatever, or coming up, or if you want to be, you know, any bylaw that's going to be changed, the procedure or whatever, like maybe just some sort of blurb on our government in the Hamill Herald every time we do it, not necessarily just some bylaws or anything.
We actually have the Hamill Herald going out in the next week or so, don't we, Councilor Fox? So maybe we can look to see if we have enough room that we might even be able to put it in this issue.
Yeah, we can certainly.
Great idea, Councilor Highslop.
Okay, we're good, so I'll get a motion.
I see.
The Hamill.
Right now, we're just doing a call for question, actually, the motion's up tomorrow.
Yep, okay, any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those contrary-minded, motion carry.
And then, oh, sorry, I'll bylaw number 16 dash 2019 amendment to a bylaw establishing a code of conduct for council. And I said now move to amendment to bylaw 16, 2019, a bylaw establishing code of conduct for council to give it its second reading by title.
Do you want to read it by title?
Yeah, second or first.
Oh, sorry, get a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those contrary-minded, motion carry, thank you. Can you read the bylaw again?
Bylaw number 16 dash 2019 amendment to a bylaw establishing code of conduct for council. And then we go to.
Committee composition.
Then we go to first reading of bylaw number 29 dash 2023, a bylaw respecting the duties and powers of the chief administrative officer.
We haven't, we skipped the committee composition.
Sorry?
We're still doing bylaws.
Bylaws, notice, we had a whole bunch of these we had to go through tonight.
Okay.
The first and second reading.
Fair enough.
There's actually, should be, should we also have here, so, I'm sorry, I'm in the middle of the motion, but I need to clarify something with the clerk. So this is, should we also be doing a second reading?
Um, except we're going to proceed with a bylaw.
No, we also do a second reading of the CIO one tonight?
Uh, the CIO one will be the first reading because it's the brand new.
Right.
That's going to be.
All right, it's not pre-existing. You're right, yes, all right. Yes, proceedings, okay. Wrong order.
Yeah, she's got them backwards.
Yeah, they're, it's in the wrong order.
Yep.
So we're going on the bylaws first then, right? And then we'll get into the committees.
Okay, fair enough.
I think, right, is the idea? Okay. So, yeah, I'll restart that story just to clarify. So I'll move with bylaw number 29, 2023, a bylaw respecting the duties and powers of the chief administrative officer, be giving its first reading by title. I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded?
Does someone second that, sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilor Fox.
Sorry, I didn't hear. Hey.
Okay, so.
Okay, so they got to read it first, so bylaw 29 dash 2023, a bylaw respecting the duties and powers of the chief administrative officer.
You said it.
No, it was approved, so you have to read it. You have to actually read the title after it's approved. We got one more, sorry, I know, there's a whole bunch of these, it's just titles and stuffs tonight, but, so I also moved amendment to bylaw 01, 2014, a bylaw respecting the proceedings of council administration, giving its second reading by title. First reading, of course, was done in November, I believe, or October of last year.
So we still need a moment.
Say second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded, you want to read the title?
Okay, so bylaw 01, 2014 amendment to a bylaw respecting the proceedings of council and administration.
So the one for this, this is mostly, previously in the procedural bylaw, it stated the clerk treasures report, so we're going to have to change this to the CIO.
Yeah, there may be a couple of other things in there too.
Yeah.
I think back in October, Councilor Highslop suggested a few things that we should really look into as well at the same time after the first reading was done, so we'll look at all that after tonight, once we figure out where we're going to meet.
Okay, so we still have the committee composition changes.
Yes, so, um, the committee composition, difference between standing versus operational. So once again, as I discussed earlier, before, I often would reach out to council to do operational things. With the increase of staffing, we really need to go back that it is my duty to do operational, and it is council's to do governance. So it's my recommendation that we change our committees, so a standing committee function as an advisory body to the council as a whole, or as council as a whole, in reviewing such matters as financial governance and facilities with respect to governance and formulating recommendations. So these committees would consist of the following, the finance committee, facilities and land planning. We always previously had just facilities. I really think that land planning should be part of the facilities because you can't build a new facility unless you have land. So I think that those two would really combine, so I think we should change the name of our committee to facilities and land planning. The emergency measures committee, council is not allowed to, they're not permitted to sit on our emergency measures committee because if we have an emergency in Hamill, we will have the EOC here, the operations, and council is the one that will be looking after the public kind of thing. So we will be working separately, and council will be in another room. So I believe that this would be considered the advisory body. The age-friendly committee, that would also be an advisory body, that would be something that is constantly going to be coming back to council. It would be working with the seniors, but it doesn't have to be every counselor on this committee. I just realized that I also missed another one, which would be the governance committee, and I think this would also be an advisory body because not all of council has to be on it. The governance committee can make recommendations on bylaws and policies and bring that back to council, so we will add the governance under.
Operational. Right?
Um, I think it should be just an advisory body.
Okay.
It's still, because up in our heading, it says that the standing committee reviews matters of financial governance and facilities, so I think that that should be under there as an advisory body. Excuse me, an operational committee, that would function as an advisory body to the CIO in assisting with such matters as communicating with the public, providing programs, and suggesting ideas to be brought forward to council as a whole. So these committees would consist of the Parks and Recreation Committee and the Communications Committee because both of those are committees that would work with staff, and once we get the recreation coordinator hired, then they would kind of be the head of that department, and they would bring recommendations back to the body and then to council. So my recommendation is that the governance committee will draft an amendment to our policy number 201401, which is our committee policy, and the changes to these committees will be made. So I have provided.
Excuse me.
With a motion if somebody would like to read that, if you agree with what I presented.
Okay, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Because I'd rather us have a discussion prior to making that motion, if we can have an informal discussion, because that's what I thought we were going to do tonight. So you want me to do that, or do you want somebody to make a motion, and then I can?
Can I motion to suspend the rules then for a discussion over the committee composition?
Yep.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded, motion carries. So we'll now suspend the rules so we can have an open discussion on the committee's makeup.
Want to go first?
Sure.
Okay, so I won't be confused by it all. So standing committees generally are permanent committees, even under Robert's rules, they're considered committees that are, you know, in constant operation. So, and then those things such as like finance, facilities, land use and land planning, if those are committees as a whole, then they're, and they're still standing committees though.
Correct.
They are to be comprised of all counselors, is my understanding.
Correct.
And the other one, like age-friendly would not be considered a standing committee because it's considered an ad hoc committee or a special committee, because it was only, technically, it was created to do a particular task, and then once that task was completed, it was supposed to be done, it was finished, unless like in New, in New Maryland, for example, they had their age-friendly, once it was done, then they changed it to a seniors committee. So that could be done, but the age-friendly is typically for us to get our age-friendly designation, was my understanding. So my thing is we need to have a bigger discussion on all of this. I don't know technically what the quorum is going to be, how the committees are going to be comprised, any of that stuff. For me personally, Parks and Rec has been working very well. I've been chair of it for over eight years now. I think there was one year in there that I didn't, and it was working really, really I would recommend keeping it as is, personally. We've had Dan sit on it as the operations manager, we've had two counselors and three staff, basically, and we can have more counselors, whatever, but the three staff, the assistant clerk, the building operations manager, and the admin assistant were all important and integral parts of the Parks and Rec committee. Dan was the building operations manager and responsible for parks and facilities, able to remind us with upgrades that we needed to do for the park. Having the assistant clerk on the committee was, like, you know, not only for record keeping, but for clarification, for updates, and for any changes that were coming down the pipe. And I realize we don't have an assistant clerk hired yet, but according to local government, we still need a clerk to attend council meeting, or any council meeting apparently is perlop for assistant clerk who's supposed to him. So I would recommend that we continue it. The only thing that I might add would be if Megan is going to be on it, then we would have to change the timing for Tuesday. I just, as chair, I'm not understanding where we're going with this, so, and there was no discussion with me prior to, which to me is annoying. And I just feel that if you're trying, if you're changing them, if you want Parks and Rec, for example, to be just an events committee, I really wouldn't recommend that. My experience in the past is that having people sit on a committee and also have to do events is not, it's not good because they weren't, our volunteers weren't there, it was very simple. And our special committees that we have, Hamill Days and, um, Success, Eastern Stradivarius, those are special committees, because we really need, you know, those thirty volunteers or to name. So I, I'm, I for one am not in favor of this motion because I, I don't, to be honest, I don't, I don't understand exactly where Parks and Rec fits in here.
Okay, so can I explain how I was thinking?
Sure.
Um, so with the Parks and Rec committee, as it currently stands, it is staff and a couple of counselors. I, when we get the recreation director, um, the, it is going to be mostly activities and stuff like that. I really think that public should be allowed to sit on that Parks and Rec committee. We need their input on activities, power moving forward, and stuff like that. So that is why I think that it should be more of an operational thing because it is going to be a committee that really, it will be myself and the recreation director that would give council recommendations and stuff like that. So that is kind of where I was going with, with that. Because if you take out the land planning that you guys currently do, and we put that into facilities, then really what the recreation committee has left is leisure, more or less.
So who do you foresee doing this master plan? Would have to be redone. I mean, we've been reviewing the recreation and leisure master plan.
That is what we hire a recreation director for, so either we would have it sourced out, or if they have the knowledge to do it, then they would be doing it, and it would be brought back to all of council.
But as you said, if operations is going to be staffed.
Correct.
Then shouldn't you take over all of events? There would be no need for Parks and Rec?
No, Parks and Rec would be an operational committee that would be doing operational stuff for the community. It would be doing recreational events, it would be.
It would basically be doing what it's doing now, except it would allow public to sit on the, like, we had, prior to the last change in twenty, I don't remember if it was twenty eighteen, when we flipped to the standing committee, we had public on that committee, and they worked really well with it. It was really nice. I don't, I didn't like the fact that we lost public, so I do like that idea, and there's certainly no reason that Dan can't stay on it for doing, like, talking about maintenance operation stuff.
Okay, well, then I'm just going to say, I'm not interested in changing it, so if you do want to move that way, that's fine, but I won't be sitting on it. I don't have a problem with stepping down.
Can I, this just came out as Friday, and I think the last time we did this, it was a long conversation. I think we went through a couple of meetings going through it, in fact, because we had the guy on the TV also, and we were debating back and forth. Can we table this for a bit?
We could table, not make the motion.
This just came out as on Friday.
I could just bring this forward to you. We have eight weeks of local governance training, and. we have eight weeks of local governance training, and maybe we will learn something different, if you want to do that, and bring it back at the next, at the next meeting. It could be, because, um, in order to do this, we are going to have to change our committee policy, so the governance committee has many policies to change, so this could be something that we just wait for...
Yeah.
...a month or two to finish, and then we would be, finish the local governance training.
When we did this last time, the guy on the TV, and what we were talking, there was a lot of confliction, I feel like we're in the same boat as we were last time, I think it'll behoove us to go through this training again, just get refreshed on what a committee and how it's structured, and then make our best decision after that.
Okay.
Okay, we can table this.
So I move to table the, uh, well, wait, there's no motion.
There's no motion, uh, it was just my report running forward, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
We just suspended the rules for open discussion.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, so, uh, councils wish us to table this for at least another month, possibly two?
But we don't have to move the motion, it's just a report that I have brought forward.
You just have to go back into regular session.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to get, uh, on, on, when discussion ends, yeah.
When discussion ends, we, we back in rules, we don't have to do anything.
So we don't have to do anything.
So, any more comments?
Nope.
We're good? Okay.
This thing is all, what, uh, something out here, straight here.
Okay, so, upcoming activities, uh, under section eighteen, we have the Zoomers, January the nineteenth at twelve P M., uh, Zoomer, 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 Zoomers, January twenty-fourth, January twenty-sixth, January thirty-first, February second, February seventh, February ninth, and February fourteenth, all at twelve P M. So, now we're looking into moving close, into closed session.
Do that have a statement?
Yes, but, uh, I was just gonna mention that, council's have to do some statements, right?
First, I'd like to thank all the people who reached out in our support, or, I apologize, I'm gonna be mumbling a little bit. First, I'd like to thank all the people who reached out in support over the last two months, to everyone who showed up, to everyone, all those who messaged advice and guidance and just encouraging words. I'm humbled not only because of the volume of people who reached out, but the numbers of people who understood exactly what I was going through. I'm used to fighting for people, but it's truly humbling to watch the people standing here for me. The community has shown me they care, and in turn, I care. I'd like to acknowledge that this is difficult for all of us involved, staff, other counselors, the mayor, myself, and our constituents. I would like to offer a personal welcome and thank you to the new councils who put the name forward, but I also want to apologize we are here today, still dealing with this and dealing with me. I didn't want this fight, and if I had a choice, I would be focused on learning all I could about our newly expanded communities, and in the coming weeks, I imagine, I'll have the opportunity to do so. I had several speeches and arguments prepared for tonight to address the issues as I see them, but I opted instead to dial back some of the rhetoric, and while I believe every single issue that was presented in the code of conduct is misguided, I won't at this time, uh, I won't at this moment go into the details of the specifics of the issues, instead table it for another time. Over the last couple of weeks, however, it's been insinuated that I'm getting people from the public to do things. I have not asked a single member of the public to show up here or ask any information from anybody, though I do welcome the support and I thank you. It has been insinuated that I'm the cause of the citizens' mistrust, I would argue this misguided code, code of conduct is an example of the cause of mistrust and not myself. It has also been insinuated I'm using social media to leak things that are confidential, this simply isn't true in any form, I have never shared anything we've ever done, including emails, I haven't deleted a single social media post, so it should be approvable otherwise. The only time I publicly revealed anything from an email conversations was November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, when I shared to the public the motion that at the time was to be voted to stop for public consumption, all recording of council sessions to be taken effect immediately, meaning there were no more chance, there will be no chance of public engagement, nor will the public even hear that debate. I feel that the public, I feel it was of public interest, it wasn't, it wasn't a conversation, it was a motion that was coming, supported at least by two counselors, and can be borne out in email conversation. I'll address, though, the very issue of this code of conduct itself and to a couple of the punishments that was applied. We collectively, council, spent tens, even hundreds of hours developing a code of conduct policy. The governance committee chaired by two council members here today, put together this code of conduct and had input from all of us counselors and staff. However, when this body decided to apply the code of conduct, get someone, me, they opted to ignore the bylaw we developed and agreed to, instead choosing to use an undocumented, informal process that had exceptionally formal results circumventing the very rules we all agreed upon. Governing and government has to be clear and fair with rules. This code of conduct against me and the threats of it prior is, I feel, is weaponizing opinions. I do not believe that my opinion is superior to yours, but I also don't believe yours collectively or otherwise is superior to mine. I'd like to point out, I was hired by the constituents of Hanwell as a duly elected representative, I do not work for the members of council or its staff, and I'm hired to work solely at the discretion of its citizens. When it comes to two points regarding the punishments that apply to me, in my role of counselor, I am both governing body and opposition. By sanctioning that government has sole authority to approve my social media or public statements takes away one or both of those rules. I do not, do not understand how council thinks a government can act legally or morally or legally have the power to control someone's social media account. Does this body feel the federal government, the provincial government have this right, or is it just a municipality thing? The second point, I was hired by the Hanwell, I was hired by the people at Hanwell as a duly elected official, so I ask, what moral or ethical or legal authority does a government feel that you have the power to make an employee work for six months for free that isn't even hired by you? There's only two reasons such a harsh and long sanction would be applied. You either thought it would force me to quit, and in doing so, you thought it could circumvent the electors, and I certainly hope that conversation was never breached, nor do I assume you did, or two, you seriously thought that it was just and righteous that a government could make someone legally work for free for six months. Does this council think that the federal, provincial government has this legal authority, or is this too just the authority of the municipality? This council is weaponized in code of conduct for expressing and sharing differing opinions, this is dangerous, not just because it quells needed debate, but because if for no other reason, be able to openly discuss oppo, ramifications such as the sanctions that were applied to me. One day you here may have an issue you feel passionate about and want to communicate to the public, but other councils may not want you to share, I suggest we stop weaponizing the code of conduct. I didn't end up here by accident, and my mistrust has been earned over repetitive threats, actions regarding internal and external use, or internal and the threat of use of code of conduct. As you go into session, closed session tonight, I'll remind you, I didn't ask for this fight, I didn't want this fight, the community deserves better than this fight, however, I will defend myself as promised. As you, I ask that you reconsider the motion that was passed into December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, want it better and more cohesive council, I suggest, I suggest stop using a stick as a method of dealing with me, it has to be obvious by now that a stick doesn't work with my personality. To some, the word social media seems bad words, but I do not subscribe to that, I, I have a confession here, that probably, obviously, to most everybody who's ever talked to me, but I am not the smartest person in the room, by far, most often, I am not it, however, my superpower is that I recognize that. I expect and desire to consult with as many people as I can on any number of subjects, because I've become better for it, learning things that I may not have known, or gaining a better understanding of issues. I suggest going forward, you folks let me be me, and I let you be you. I believe as a rural community, as a counselor, social media can be a very valuable asset to collect and share, disseminate information and ideas, to share the truth as I know them. If you don't like what I'm sharing on social media, I ask that you ignore it, debate it, or move on. I don't, I do not believe government should have the power to keep a file on any of its constituents or its counselors, I do not believe you, you should attack the counselor for sharing or expressing an opinion or a motion that was coming to the floor, I don't believe a counselor should have a code of conduct for sharing what he or she believes. I stand behind everything I've done, and again, since November two thousand and twenty-one, I have almost entirely dealt with this counselor in emails, so any insinuations of issues should be easily and readily provable. I only ask that full threads be used and not parsed information. Specifically, on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, council has agreed, this is after my code of conduct against me, council has agreed to hire a HR specialist to come in, to let some people know the good news, and I let some people know the good news that perhaps the fever was breaking. Since, I had three emails from the mayor speaking to possible further reprimands, which will bring us to another closed session tonight, which I will not partake in, whether, without even letting your agreed-upon process move forward first. I recommend we put this chapter behind us and we move on, but I'm not in control of this process to the public. Right is right, and it's easy to tell fundamentally what right is, and what the right thing is. I recommend you not only question me, but the processes that brought us here. I'm fighting for rights because one day I may not be a counselor, and I hope for clear rules, clear processes, transparency and true public engagement, which is among the reasons I actually ran to represent you, because it wasn't applied for me prior. Sorry, I lost my spots. As a counselor, we are your closest and most intimate elected representation, demand of me, actually, demand of us, what you want a government to look like and feel like. Personally, this process has been exceptionally hard on me and my family, but I think it's important that my kids see me standing up for what I think is right and fair. But I think it's important, sorry, I said that already. I would like to thank all the people who reached out in support and understanding, it is truly humbling and overwhelming, I also ask the public treat everyone with respect, especially when we're going through times of disagreement. There is a new addition to the closed session tonight, and actually, I can't in my right mind possibly want to attend that. I understand, but I'm afraid that I want to be able to talk about things without having to be in closed session, and I love, and I abide by the rules of what closed session is supposed to be. While in closed session, I ask to you, council, to rescind the motion to December sixth, and let us all move on, to stop worrying about what I'm doing or saying, and start worrying about how we're gonna work for our community, and as always, how, how we proceed tomorrow is gonna be up to you. I yield back.
Okay, I need a motion to go into closed session, please.
Now, before I do that, just, I, I just wanted to, information, there's a approach at nine P M., I'd like the motion to extend the meeting past nine P M., there's no way we'll be able to do it.
All those in favor of extending the meeting past nine P M., please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carries, thank you. So we're moving to closed session. Okay, can I have the motion in the closed session, please?
Please, Chair, ready? I move to go into closed session.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carries, thank you.
We come out of closed session and go into open session.
I second it.
Any questions? All those in favor of going back into open session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carries, we are now in open session.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second here?
I'll second.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you, coun...